Good morning, afternoon, evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the special session of the 19th International Anti-Corruption Conference. My name is Kim Yoonjin, your emcee for this session. It is my great honor and my pleasure to be the emcee for this meaningful ceremony. This session has specially prepared under the theme of Korea Special Session, Talk About Justice in the Post-COVID-19 Era. The special session is divided into Part 1 and Part 2. First part will talk about fairness, justice, and common good with Professor Michael Sander of Harvard University. And the second part is held in the form of interactive dialogue between Chairperson John Heung Hee and a group of young panelists under the theme of anti-corruption and integrity for a society of justice. So for your information, the studio in Korea has been complying with all the requested COVID-19 quarantine measures required by the government. So we would like to ask all speakers in Korean studio to take off masks for the other speakers and attendees while you're on the stage. Now we will start the first session with Professor Sun Woo Kim of Sungseon University, who is the host of the first part talk. Professor, the floor is yours.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am Kim Son Woo from Sungseon University. This special session is being done to talk about various social phenomenon in Korea and in the US with Professor Michael Sander. Let me greet him. Hello, Professor Sander.
Hello, Professor Kim. I'm honored to be with you for this conversation.
네, 저도 함께 해서 영광입니다.
I'm also honored to be here. So, long time no see. Today, our online interview with you is a special session of the 19th IACC. The theme of the talk is fairness, justice, and the common good. If it were not for COVID-19, we would have invited you to Korea and have conversation in person. COVID-19 started from the beginning of this year, and as we approached the winter, it has developed into a new pandemic. Koreans as well as all people around the world are feeling threatened by this crisis. Professor Sander, first of all, congratulations on the publication of your book translated into Korean.
Thank you very much. I look forward to hearing what Korean readers have to say about it.
네, 그 책은 한국에서 벌써...
That book has received a lot of attention from Korean readers. They're actually standing in a line to buy that book.
Well, thank you. I look forward to the time after the pandemic when I can visit Korea to speak directly with you and with Korean readers.
네, 감사합니다. 이 책을 보면...
Thank you. In your book, especially in the prologue, you mentioned COVID-19. And this book is dealing with merit or meritocracy. First, what is meritocracy? And how is meritocracy related to COVID-19? Could you explain about this, please?
During the COVID-19 pandemic, we have seen in our societies the full effects, the dramatic effects of the inequalities that existed in our societies before the pandemic arrived. A crisis like a pandemic often does not change us, but it highlights aspects of our societies that are already present. And in our case, that means deep inequalities. Now, during the pandemic, we have come to realize, those of us who have the luxury of working from home away from risk, we have come to realize how deeply we depend on workers we often overlook. The workers in the hospitals, of course, but also delivery workers, truck drivers, grocery store clerks, healthcare providers. Often, these workers are not the best-paid or most-respected workers, and yet now we recognize them as essential workers. So part of my message is that this could be a moment to rethink our economy and the way we reward and also the way we honor and recognize workers who may not have high prestigious credentials, workers who may not have attended university even, but who nonetheless make valuable contributions to the common good.
Thank you very much. All of your books have been translated into Korean. In particular, the book that is translated in 2010 and revised in 2014, the book titled "Justice" received great attention among Koreans, and it also triggered the sensitivity toward justice among Koreans contributing to political change, I believe. And this book entitled "The Tyranny of Merit." And I would like to know regarding justice and fairness, how is it related to the justice in your book?
Well, one big issue of fairness in our societies, and this is true certainly in my country, and it is also true in Korea, as I understand, that there are deepening inequalities, especially in recent decades. And this has an effect on education. It has an effect on who has an opportunity to get a good education, who has an opportunity to compete for admission to the best universities. Now, in a meritocracy, in a perfect meritocracy, where everyone has an equal chance, the idea of a meritocracy is that those who gain admission to the top colleges and universities, those who win the best jobs, those who reap the best rewards are those who have earned it, who have worked, who have demonstrated their talents. But as we know, in societies such as ours, the competition is not truly fair. Not everyone has an equal chance to succeed. Not everyone has an equal chance to go to the best cram courses and tutors to prepare for college entrance examinations. So one question of fairness is whether the meritocracy we have does truly reflect talent and effort, or whether it also reflects unfair advantages that children from affluent backgrounds have over young people from less affluent backgrounds. So this is one question about meritocracy in fairness that I think our societies need to address in order to work toward a more equal societies where everyone truly has an equal chance to succeed.
감사합니다.
Thank you very much for your explanation. Anti-corruption and Civil Rights Commission of Korea, or ACRC, proposed the idea of having an interview with you. ACRC conducted a survey, asking people what they think of Korea's traditional saying, which means that a great talent is born from a poor family. In other words, it means whether the upward mobility would be possible in Korean society. And only one person out of 10 Koreans answered that that is possible. Another institution conducted a similar survey. It asked people, "Do you believe this sentence, 'Your efforts will never betray you'?" And 74% of the respondents said, "No, that does not reflect the reality." These surveys and the answers people gave to the survey are all based on the belief that efforts or merit should be rewarded. Do you think that meritocracy should be criticized?
I think the surveys are very revealing, because what they show is that the majority of Koreans who answered the surveys do not believe there is fair opportunity for everyone, regardless of background, to compete fairly and to rise through their own efforts. When similar surveys have been conducted in the US, in my country, the results have been different. People are more optimistic about the opportunity to rise and also about whether or not effort will be rewarded. More people say, "Yes, effort is rewarded." Now, one might conclude that these different results show that there is a greater opportunity for upward mobility in the US than in Korea, but I would not draw this conclusion. I would draw a different conclusion. In fact, in the US, despite everything we tell ourselves about the American dream of upward mobility, it is actually very difficult to rise from a poor family to an affluent family. It's even difficult to rise to the middle class. So the fact that many Americans will respond to a survey saying, "Yes, it's always possible to rise," shows, I think, that we are more unrealistic. We don't fully realize the important work that remains to be done in creating a more equal society where everyone does truly have equal opportunities. In some ways, the Korean surveys show that Koreans are more honest and self-critical about their society. Many Koreans recognize the unfairness and the inequality of opportunity that exists. And so in some ways, this is the first step toward bringing about a more fair society. The first step is to recognize the problem, to recognize, as your surveys suggest, that most people recognize that there is a problem, a problem of fairness, a problem of inequality. Recognizing the problem is the first step toward working to reform the economy and the society so that the inequalities are less and the opportunities are greater. So this I see as a difference in the public opinion about opportunity and about effort that in the case of South Korea could lead to serious efforts of reform to try to bring about a more fair society.
미국과 한국의 설문 결과를 비교해 주실 것 같아요.
Thank you very much for comparing the survey outcome between Korea and the US. And when it comes to the US, you said that the outcome is more optimistic than Korean outcome. Thank you very much for elaborating on it. So in a sense, I believe in changing current situation, Korea is in a more favorable situation. Thank you very much for your comment.
Yes, I think so, because I think that the optimistic responses to the American surveys are actually unrealistic and reveal that we do not fully recognize the problem that we have. Whereas in Korea, the fact that many, many Koreans are aware of the unfairness is the first step toward bringing about a more equal society, and I think that's actually an encouraging message. Here, I think we in America could learn something from that and recognize that we have to face up to the lack of upward mobility and to the lack of fairness before we can correct it.
내일은 계층간의 이동을 위해서는 교육이 굉장히 중요합니다.
For upward mobility, education is very important. Today, for the special session, we received questions from our citizens, and over 500 citizens sent us questions. And we selected several young people who asked very good questions. I'd like to ask the first panelist to ask you a question. Ms. Kim Hee Ri, would you greet him?
안녕하세요, 교수님.
Hello, Professor Sander. I am so honored to meet with you online. In your book, "The Tyranny of Merit," you mentioned that... You mentioned the meritocracy and fairness by taking an example of college admissions system. The US is selecting students based on SAT score and admission officer system, but this has not actually expanded... In the case of Korea, we have systems like this. We also select students based on admission officer system. But still, we have fierce competition among students to enter good universities. And for some students, they receive private education even before they enter elementary schools. And when they go to schools, they receive additional private tutoring to be in a more advantageous and favorable position to enter universities. This has widened the gap between students who receive only public education and those who receive public education along with private education. As such, family background has influence on the result of college admission among students. So these days, we are not sure whether the admission officer system would really ensure fairness in the college admission process. In order to complement their limits of meritocracy and to ensure fairness, what do you think we can do as citizens?
Well, thank you very much for that question, which is very important, because admission to colleges and universities, especially where the competition is very intense, this raises a question right at the heart of what a meritocratic society is about. And it brings out two of the problems with the meritocracy that we have today. One problem, you've identified very well in your question, which is that we don't really live up to the meritocratic principles we proclaim if, when it's possible for young people from wealthy families to get a lot of advantages from private education and private tutoring, advantages that are not available to students who come from less affluent families. How can that competition be considered fair? How can that competition be considered a truly meritocratic system, especially when the college entrance exams often reflect differences in family income? We have a similar problem in the US. We have a college entrance exam, which originally was intended to measure the intellectual gifts and aptitudes of students without regard to their economic or class background. But because of the special outside tutoring and other advantages growing up, young people from affluent families enjoy tremendous advantages in these college entrance exams, and the results on college entrance exams are closely correlated to the family income of the students. The higher the family income, the greater the likelihood of getting a high score. So for any system of fairness, we have to do something about the unequal educational opportunities that young people have even before they have a chance to compete for college admission. That's one problem. There's another problem that I write about in my book, "The Tyranny of Merit," which is even for those young people who succeed and who do win admission to top colleges and universities, the intense pressure of the years leading up to college can bring about very serious psychological injury, because the entire period, the years leading up to the college entrance competition, these are years of such stress, such anxiety, such pressure to perform and to achieve, that even those who succeed and win admission are injured, I think, in the process. I don't mean that they are physically injured, but they are injured in terms of their morale, their spirit, their psychological well-being. The incidence of depression, of anxiety, even of thinking of suicide is at an alarming level among young people today. And this, I think, is true in both of our countries. And this too is one of the prices we pay for making higher education and admission to colleges and universities, the way that a society allocates opportunity in a meritocratic society. And this takes away from the intrinsic love of learning. It takes away from students being able to step back, not under intense pressure, but to step back to reflect on what's worth caring about, what they want to study, what their true passions are, where they could make the greatest contribution. These intrinsic values of higher education are, I think, neglected by a system that makes almost every young person think first and foremost about whether one's future career will depend on being admitted to a top university. So I think these are two different problems that we face with the kind of intense pressure and anxiety created by the system of college admissions that we have in both of our countries. The lack of equal opportunity, but also the pressure and the psychological damage even on those who succeed.
Thank you very much for your answer. In your answer, you mentioned the problem of education, and I believe this is not just for Korea. This is a global issue, and in order to change this, we need to change the system. And citizens first need to recognize the problem and think again, what is the real value of education? That would be the first step for change. Thank you very much. The role of citizens, that was brought to the front by this question from Harry Kim. And in our society, we are considering, when should we begin this civic education? Without civic education, we cannot have good education. Your wife, Professor Kiku Adato Sander, wrote a fairy tale book, "Babian and the Magic Star," and it comes with a guidebook, and it was translated into Korean. And in this guidebook, you mentioned about civic education using fairy tale. And for children, how can we make possible the civic education?
Well, thank you for this question. And then let me say first of all, how proud I am that my wife's book, children's book, "Babian and the Magic Star," it has now been translated into Korean and will be available for Korean children, their parents, their families, and their teachers to read about this creature, this fantasy story, that actually provides an occasion for young people to read the story, to discuss the story with their parents and their teachers, and to begin to engage in critical thinking and to use their moral imaginations in thinking about the story, the characters in their story, the moral transformation that a once-fierce monster undergoes, transformation that turns him from an aggressive, feared monster to a gentle, kind monster who lives in harmony with his friends. I think, and then we've created, my wife, Kiku Adato, and I have created a guidebook for parents and teachers with activities to help their young people think critically and use their moral imagination and engage in creative artistic activities in thinking about this story. The reason I think this project is so important is that civic education must begin at a young age. I think it should begin long before students reach high school or university. And the way for civic education to begin early is with stories, with stories that capture the imagination of children from the time they're very young, even perhaps before they can read for themselves. Because when children read stories and myths and magical tales, they can begin to think about the difference between right and wrong, and they can think about what it means to form friendships. They can think about what it means to live in harmony with their friends, what it means to meet and encounter creatures and people who may be unfamiliar to them. So this is the way values are formed. This is the way civic education can begin, to begin young with stories, with the moral imagination, and with the critical thinking that teachers and parents can encourage in their children by beginning with stories that inspire their moral imagination. And this was our goal in creating the guidebook for the story, the children's story, "Babian and the Magic Star." And I should also add that the pictures are beautiful, beautiful color pictures that were created by an artist that I think will also attract the attention and the imagination of children as they think about this story of a monster who undergoes a great transformation.
Moral reasoning, critical thinking, these are not just for adults. These values are also for children. Children can learn about these values through fairy tales. So let's get back to the story about adults. You mentioned that we should seek for politics of the common good to restore solidarity in our society. How can we find the common good? In your book, you mentioned the consumerist conception of common good and the civic conception of common good. So when we think about common good, we are often confused between the two concepts. So why is it important to make distinction between the two?
I think it's important to make the distinction between these two conceptions of the common good for the following reason. Often, when we think about the common good, we simply think about adding up the interests and the preferences, the wants and the desires of all citizens, trying to add them up in a kind of calculus, as if, as if the common good were simply about satisfying our desires as consumers to buy things. As consumers, and economists know this, as consumers, we have certain preferences, certain interests, certain wants and desires, and we bring those preferences, wants and desires, to the marketplace. And we bring those preferences, wants and desires, to the marketplace. And depending on how much money we have at our disposal, we try to satisfy those preferences. But it would be a mistake to think that the common good consists simply in the sum of our consumer preferences. That's the consumerist idea of the common good. And all it reflects is the activity of buying and selling and shopping and wanting without critically examining the interests and preferences, the wants and desires we have. The civic conception of the common good is what happens when we gather as citizens, not as consumers in the marketplace, but as citizens in democratic societies to try to reason together about our competing conceptions of what makes for a just society, about what to do, about inequality, about what we owe one another as fellow citizens. This is the civic conception of the common good. It does not come simply by buying and consuming goods together. It comes from deliberating together as equal citizens about the purposes our political community should pursue. Now, this is a more challenging idea of the common good, the civic conception. Because it requires that we reason together, deliberate with one another, even where we may disagree. In pluralist societies, we don't all agree on values. We don't all agree on the meaning of a just society. We don't all agree on how income and wealth should be distributed. We don't agree on the role of markets. And so we have these debates. But I think what we need to do is to recognize that even despite our disagreements about values, it is important that we do what we can to develop among citizens the ability, the art, the human sympathies that enable us to reason together with our fellow citizens, even where we disagree about values, to disagree on the basis of stability and mutual respect. But this process of democratic deliberation about values, about common purposes and ends, this is what makes for democratic citizens. This is how we learn to live with one another. It's in a way, it's a kind of civic education. And this is how it differs, Professor Kim. This is how it differs from the activity of consuming, of simply adding up the consumer preferences we happen to have.
Thank you. Utilitarian approach is introduced in your book, Justice. And to be a good citizen, we need to think about values in a democratic way. And this social change will start from the recognition of citizens. And it is related to politics. And it should lead up to the systemic change. In your book, you mentioned about the level of education of politicians. And you said that good politics has nothing to do with good education. So we have another citizen with question. Mr. Choi, please go ahead. Professor, hello. This is my question. In the modern democratic society, there are competing opinions. And usually, we think that those with higher education degree are smart and they can produce good opinion. Moreover, modern politics is related to complex legal system and various economic factors. Considering this, usually, those with professional knowledge or legal experts may be more suitable to produce political opinion. So what do you think about my idea?
Well, thank you for that question, which is very important, and it's a difficult question. Because you're right. We do assume, and it seems reasonable to assume, that having well-educated politicians and political leaders will lead to better policies, better, wiser government. But this is not necessarily true. Let me give you an example. Very often, those with the best educations from the best universities, with the most prestigious credentials, may be very good at economics, let's say. But may not have very good practical judgment, may not be very good at understanding the life experiences of citizens from all social and economic backgrounds. People who may be very, very well-educated experts in some technical field may be good in their limited field, but may not have the broad human sympathies necessary to lead a democratic society and to make wise judgments and to understand the historical context that makes a difference in policy. There was a famous book written about the policies that led the United States into the folly of the Vietnam War. And the name of the book was The Best and the Brightest. The book was a detailed study of how the best technocratic experts were assembled by John F. Kennedy and Lyndon Johnson in the 1960s. These were people who had held high positions in industry, in foundations, in universities. And they thought it was important to involve the United States in ever-deepening ways in the war in Vietnam. So for all of their expertise, they lacked wisdom. For all of their technical brilliance, they lacked judgment. And the result was the United States entered a devastating and unjust war that cost tens of thousands of lives. And so the best and the brightest, the best and the brightest in terms of technocratic expertise may not be the best at exercising political judgment, at exercising wisdom. Aristotle spoke about practical wisdom as the necessary virtue for governing. And he pointed out that practical wisdom is not something you can learn only from a book. It's not technocratic expertise. It's not like science exactly. Practical wisdom involves sound judgment. It involves human wisdom. It involves the ability to identify with the common good, including with the struggles of people who may not come from the most affluent families or parts of society. I think what we've seen in recent decades has been a tendency to rely on technocratic expertise as if it were a substitute for wisdom and good judgment in governing. Let me just give you one other example. In Britain, one of the most successful and effective governments of the 20th century was the government, the Labour Government, that came into office right after the Second World War. Winston Churchill, who led Britain to victory in World War II, was defeated at the end of the war. A Labour government came in and instituted a national health service, which Britain continues to preserve today, improved transportation, really built a welfare state for Britain, and helped Britain shape the post-war world. In that cabinet, the cabinet of that Labour government, were seven ministers, including the Foreign Minister, including the Minister of Health, who invented the National Health Service, who launched it. Seven ministers who did not even attend university and who had been coal miners originally. So I think we tend to forget today how important it is to include representatives from all walks of life and from all kinds of work backgrounds in democratic governance. And I think it's a mistake to assume that simply because people may be expert economists, for example, that they will have the wisdom and the practical judgment to govern well in a democratic society. At least, this is one of the arguments. Some people may disagree with me about this. But this is one of the arguments that I make in my new book.
So you mentioned that we have thought that the highest, some people think that the highest goal in their life is to enter the top university and get the largest amount of wealth. And thank you very much for the meaningful message. But I'd like to ask you to explain about one more concept. We are now living in the free, globalized economy in order to achieve just society. What do we need? Many people say that we need distributive justice. The gap between the rich and the poor is increasing in the modern society. And we are focusing on collecting tax more to improve welfare benefits for the people so that we can redistribute the wealth among members of the society. In your book, you mentioned contributive justice, which sounds quite new to us. In your new book, it seems that contributive justice plays a very important role. What is contributive justice and why is it important?
I think first of all, the distributive justice is also important. It is important, I think, to narrow the gap between rich and poor. Because when that gap grows too great, it can be corrosive of the common life that democracy requires, that a healthy democracy requires. But you're right. In my new book, I also emphasize contributive justice. And what I mean by this is that it's not only important to narrow the gap between rich and poor, though that is important. It's also important that everyone in the society has a role to play and a contribution to make to the economy and to the common good. We often assume that the money people make is the measure of their contribution to the common good. But this is a mistake. There are many contributions to the common good of enormous value that may or may not be well-paid by the market. Contributive justice begins with the idea that our fundamental human need is to be needed by the members of our community, by our fellow citizens, and to be honored and recognized when we are able, in one way or another, to answer those needs, to contribute to the common good. So it's important that everyone have equal access to health and education and a decent life. It is also important that everyone have an opportunity to contribute something of value, something of meaning that is recognized by the wider society as having contributed something of importance. This is what I mean by the dignity of work. I think part of the problem in recent decades is that many working people feel that the work they do is no longer respected, is no longer honored by the society in the way it once was. And I think one of the reasons for this is the great value we place on credentials, on prestigious credentials, on a university degree. Now, of course, I think it is important to encourage as many people as would like to to be able to attend college or university. It's also important to broaden access to universities to those who can't afford it. This is a noble and important mission. But I think we make a mistake. If we create a society and an economy where the only people who are respected for the work they do are those with university degrees and prestigious credentials, I think we need to renew the dignity of work in our societies so that everyone feels that the contribution that he or she makes is respected, is honored, and is recognized. That's what I mean by contributive justice.
In the COVID-19 era, there are many things taking place new to us. And there have been many minor things. And we now realize that they are actually valuable. So these minor things, we are wondering whether they are receiving proper compensation. And your comment, especially the contributive justice, made us think about this issue deeper. And it is an opportunity to think, what is the direction for our society to move forward? Thank you very much. Now it's time to finish our dialogue. I think always it feels like the time is very short to have a discussion with you. And our panelists have many questions. And it will take more than one hour, which we don't have. And I'd like to add one more last question. Today's meeting is a special session in the 19th IACC. And what is the relation between corruption and justice? We all want to see corruption goes away and want to see a society which is fair and just. Many people will watch this interview. That's why I'm asking this.
Corruption bears on the themes we have been discussing in two ways. Societies where corruption continues to be a problem are societies that find it very difficult to achieve justice and fairness. Because where corruption infects government and business, people can't feel that they are being given a fair opportunity to compete for jobs, to compete for contracts, employment, to compete for educational opportunities. So partly, anti-corruption efforts can promote a more fair society, a more just society. But a second value efforts can support and promote is the value that we've been discussing, the ideal that we've been discussing quite a lot, which is the common good. Because one of the most... Because one of the most damaging effects of corruption is that it destroys trust. And trust, trusting relationships, are what hold societies together, especially democratic societies. Where we as citizens can't make every decision, we can't be present every time a policy is enacted. We can't be present in corporate boardrooms where decisions are being made. And so, in order to live together in a society that aspires to the common good, we need to have basic trust in the major institutions of our societies, including government and including business and including the institutions of civil society. Trust is the moral glue that holds societies together and that makes democracy possible. And so corruption does damage to the common good because it erodes trust. It makes trust less and less possible. Which is why the efforts of this conference to combat corruption, to promote civil liberties and a just society are also efforts that will contribute, I believe, toward creating the kind of trust, trust toward government, toward business, but also trust toward one another, toward our fellow citizens, that a healthy democratic society requires.
Thank you very much for your comment. I have one last request for you. Actually, today, we have a very important event which is held once a year. It is college entrance examination. Most of the high school students, they take the college entrance exam. Of course, some young students participate in the examination and some others do not. These days, we are having difficult times and especially our young people feel that things are more difficult than ever. So could you please give an advice to the young people about how should they live their lives in the difficult time?
Yes, my biggest piece of advice would be... Well, I guess I have two pieces of advice. One of them is to recognize that this pandemic, this time of crisis, will pass. It's taken tremendous patience on the part of all of us to live through this period. Some societies have done better than others. The pandemic is a test of many of the ideals we've been discussing. It's a test of whether societies can hold together, a test of social cohesion, a test of trust among citizens, trust of government. And I must say that South Korea has done a much better job dealing with the pandemic than my country has. I think we've done quite a poor job, and I think we have a lot to learn from the way South Korea has contended with this pandemic crisis. But there is a broader message or word of advice that I would give young people. Of course, the college entrance examinations are a time of great pressure and great stress because so much seems to depend on it. And yet, everything we've been discussing tonight suggests that we need to find our way to a better way of thinking about how we allocate opportunity and rewards in our society. We need to think about how we can lessen the inequalities. We need to think of ways to give everyone a fair opportunity, a truly fair opportunity, regardless of the families from which they come. We need to find a way toward a kind of civic discourse in which we deal with our differences and our disagreements, not by shouting at one another, but instead by reasoning with one another on the basis of civility and mutual respect. It's been a while since I've been to South Korea. Because of the pandemic, I've not been able to visit recently. And I hope to visit as soon as the pandemic is over. But one of the most inspiring memories I have of my visits and many visits to South Korea is the opportunity to engage with young people, including a great many college students, to engage in discussions, serious discussions, about justice, about fairness, about inequality, equality and inequality, about what we owe one another as citizens and as human beings. And what gives me hope is the great hunger and eagerness I have found among South Koreans generally, but especially the younger generation, coming together in good spirits and with mutual respect to think together in public about some of the biggest questions we face. This for me, as a teacher, is tremendously satisfying. And as a citizen, as a democratic citizen, it gives me hope that this generation of young people is hungry, eager, and ready for a better kind of public discourse, a better kind of public debate, one that addresses big questions of values, questions of justice, fairness, and the common good on the basis of mutual respect. So my hope, my message is to preserve that idealism and that sense of hope and possibility even in the midst of these seemingly dark days of pandemic. The shadow of pandemic, sooner or later, will lift, will enable us to travel again, to study together again. And so this is really the hope. It's a hope born of actual experience with, an engagement with, Korean young people. And I look forward to the day, Professor Kim, my friend, when we will be able to be together again on my next visit to South Korea. And I very much look forward to the opportunity to engage in these discussions, arguing back and forth, reasoning back and forth, deliberating about justice and the common good with Korean young people. So that's my hope. This moment will pass, and we will be able to resume, I hope, our dialogue under better circumstances.
Thank you. Your message is very important, not just for Korean young people, but also young people around the world. It is such an encouragement. As you mentioned, when you visit to Korea and have a discussion with me and many young people, many other young people around the world will also visit to participate in the discourse, and I would like to see that time. And until then, we will have more interview and we'll read your book and fairy tale your wife wrote to widen our horizon. And the citizens' effort to change the society will have good resources such as your book. In your time, it is late night, but in Korea, it is early morning. We have this time gap. However, you were very enthusiastic in this interview. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I very much enjoyed it. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you. The 19th IACC special session is going to start. I am Kim Hyunook, the emcee of the talk concert on integrity. Nice to meet you all. So we are participating in the International Anti-Corruption Conference. Many people may think that, oh, it sounds difficult and anti-corruption has nothing to do with myself. But it turned out that we must learn about this value. In today's talk concert, we will learn about anti-corruption in a very easy-to-understand manner and talk about them. So I'd like to ask for your understanding today. My voice is not good because I have sore throat. Please understand this. After watching the talk concert today, I think you will feel much more familiar with the concept of anti-corruption. Many people are wearing masks, and I am wearing mask. And it feels a little comfortable with wearing mask while talking, and the mask actually goes down. But I'd like to emphasize that we are thoroughly following the COVID-19 prevention measures. But for you to watch the concert more comfortably, we're going to put off our masks. So I feel much better with my sore throat as well. Today, we're going to talk about anti-corruption, how we can eliminate corruptive practices in our society. So as we start the talk concert on anti-corruption and integrity for a just society, let me invite Mrs. Chon Hyunhee, the chairperson of Anti-Corruption and Civil Rights Commission of Korea. We will listen to her mini lecture and then start the concert. Please welcome her with a big round of applause.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am Chon Hyunhee, the chairperson of the Anti-Corruption and Civil Rights Commission of Korea. ACRC is co-hosting the 19th IACC conference with Transparency International this year. Due to COVID-19, we are holding this conference online. However, we have high expectation and hope for the conference. It'll be helpful for the international community to keep moving forward towards anti-corruption through mutual cooperation and solidarity. International Anti-Corruption Conference, anti-corruption, these concepts may sound not familiar to you and you may think that these concepts do not have much relevance to your personal life. But if you look at the book by Professor Michael Sandel titled "What Money Can't Buy", corruption doesn't just mean bribing public officials. Any behavior that corrupts certain systems or practices of a society undermines the system itself and the reputation of the social practices. And it also underestimate the value of the practices below the reasonable level. I'll take an example. Recently, in a mobile second-hand marketplace application, a user uploaded a post offering to sell her newborn baby. Many people were shocked and were relieved after such an offer was canceled. After this incident, the mobile second-hand marketplace operator decided to be more aggressive in prohibiting such transaction of life. Children are supposed to be loved and cared for by parents. If their parents consider selling their children for money, then such parents are corrupting the roles and values of parents. And if a public servant who is supposed to work for a public interest actually focuses on their own private interest, what would happen? Such a public servant corrupts the value of public authority for their own private interest. Before I became a politician, I was working as a lawyer. And I defended for a group of hemophilia patients who were infected with AIDS. At that time, I worked very hard to protect the value of life and health of human beings not to be corrupted by the interest of a big institution. This indicates that anti-corruption is more than just prohibiting bribes to public officials, but it is rather about safeguarding the just roles and values of what compose our society. So anti-corruption has very close relationship with our daily life.
Ladies and gentlemen, what do you think justice is? Justice can be defined in many ways. In dictionary, it says justice is the fair means of composing and maintaining the society. In this regard, anti-corruption that protects the true rules and values of the elements of our society is in line with justice. I would like to have an in-depth discussion with our future generation about the meaning of fairness and justice. Also, we need to make efforts to protect the true value of the elements composing our society, not so that they will not be corrupted. Thank you very much for your lecture. So you may take your seat. So we listened to the mini lecture from Chairperson Chon Hyunhee. When we hear the word anti-corruption, some people may think it's difficult to understand, but corruption actually means something that decays the value of a society. Anti-corruption means that you oppose corruption. You prevent something from being corrupted. That's what anti-corruption means. As you know very well, we have just checked the meaning of anti-corruption. We have young panelists who are here with us. How did you feel after listening to her lecture? Please feel comfortable to make comments, anyone? How did you think? Or what did you feel after listening to the lecture? I am so nervous now. I'm so nervous that's not easy to make comments. But while listening to her lecture, I came to realize the value of justice and anti-corruption in our society. Very good lecture, yes. I said it's a mini lecture, in other words, a short lecture. Now, we're going to start talk concert in a more in-depth manner. So we have nine young people who are here with us as panelists. It seems like you are a little nervous, but please feel comfortable and make any comment you would like. Especially here, in this concert, we have the head, the leader of ACRC, which is making a lot of effort to achieve anti-corruption. So, Chairperson Chon Hyunhee, I would like to first congratulate on the hosting of the 19th IACC. The first topic we're going to discuss is our efforts to eliminate foul play and privilege while establishing justice. Recently, ACRC conducted a survey for 2,000 people on fairness. They asked this question. Do you think our society is fair? And 54%, more than half of the respondents said, no, our society is not fair. So it's international conference, so I can say...
So, it's international conference, so I can say in English, "Not fair." That's the answer from more than 50% of the respondents. So, there is a famous saying in Korea which literally says, "Your arm bends inwards", which means that you tend to give benefit to your close people. Recently, the hot topic among young people is fairness. Whether fairness and equality are ensured for young people regardless of their background, family background, and regional or school background. So, our young generation is quite sensitive to the concept of fairness, which is also very important for our society. Corruption is the practice that undermines fairness in our society. For example, we can see some culture in our society where people protect their own close people. For example, they tend to give benefit to people from the same school, same region, hometown, for example. So, in the recruitment process as well, people tend to give benefit to the applicants from the same school as they are. So, that practice would give disadvantage to others. So, this is not a fair practice. So, we need to ensure fairness and transparency in the public and private sector. That's the role of ACRC. So, this is why we are holding this conference. In Korea, we still have a culture where people try to give benefit to their own close people, which is not beautiful culture, but they actually undermine the fairness in our society. So, you talked about the culture of giving favor to their own people. And so, it is known that Korean people have great affection for the people that are close to themselves. Regarding the Korean saying that your arm tends to bend inwards, in other words, you tend to give benefit to your close family and friends, 66% of the respondents said the saying is true, that reflects the reality. What about our youth? What kind of unfair practices our young people experience? In the case of our young people, they experience unfairness in the college admission process, in the employment process. That's reflected in one of the surveys we conducted. And I guess the young panelists who are here with us may agree with this fact that the young people experience unfairness, especially in the educational sector and recruitment and promotion process. So, you see, some people enjoy benefits just because of their family background, educational, or regional background, and that should be corrected. And I talked about the affection Korean people have towards their own close people. Now, I am meeting with the Chairperson Chon Hyun-hyung, not for the first time, and I feel very familiar with Mrs. Chon because I am meeting with her several times, so I feel close to her. So, feeling close to someone is not a problem. If you feel close to someone, that does not have problem. However, if your close relationship gives disadvantage to a third party, then that will be unfair practice. So, in the broadcasting program, if I talk with only Mrs. Chon, and if we exclude all the other panelists, then that would be regarded as unfair practice. So far, ACRC has been trying to eliminate such unfairness, right? Yes, that's right. We have been making a lot of efforts to eliminate corruption in our society, playing the role of a control tower. Do you know the mascot of ACRC? It's a Korean traditional secret royal inspector. The Korean traditional secret royal inspector played the role of discovering corruptive practices in the society and punish those who commit corruptive practices.
So, many young people are concerned about getting job and studying in school and admission to school. And here, we can see unfairness. So, to address this problem, we are making a lot of efforts. From 2017, ACRC is trying to address the problem of asking for special treatment or favor in hiring process. So, we have survey for hiring process of the public institutes, and we also have a special group for inspection. In this process, we identify corruption and unfair practices in the hiring process. Obviously, we are a government agency, so usually, our subject for inspection is public agency. If we can make the hiring process transparent and fair in the public agencies first, then it will spread to private institutes as well. For the young people, job is the greatest welfare. So, job is very important for young people. And in order to not give any room for corruption in the process, the ACRC is making the best effort. I'd like to ask a question to young people. What kind of foul play do you think corrupts our society? Anyone? Yes, go ahead. Please introduce yourself first. Hello, my name is Lee So-young. In news report through the special relations of parents, some ask for special favor in hiring or admission process. This is a big problem in our society, and this discourages others, and other parents feel sorry for their children, thinking that they do not provide enough support. So, I'm wondering when special favor will go away. We usually say that gold spoon. If their parents are wealthy and powerful, this can influence to the hiring process. I believe that is your opinion. So, here we have youth panelists. That's why they are talking about the cases related to you. For your comment. I feel very sorry because in ours, there are many discussions and controversies over parents' relations with others, especially with powerful people. So, as an established generation, I feel really sorry for our young generation. And this is very important topic related to fairness. Your hard work will be ignored if there is a kickback or connection with powerful people. So, this is unfair practice and corruption. In relation to this, to prevent our young people from feeling devastation, the ACRC will make more efforts. Can we turn to another one? Is there anyone who want to make a comment? Please make introduction of yourself.
Hello, my name is Seong Bong. Personally, I believe in a vertical organization, fair culture needs to be spread. Regardless of organization, we should not use our educational or regional background to pull the line. And I believe this kind of foul play is damaging our society and fairness. And in all organization, the principle of fairness and transparency should not be damaged. So, what is your opinion, Chairperson?
Mr. Seong, you mentioned about vertical organization and educational background and regional background. This is unfair, you said. The mood is quite heavy. Seong, do you know the expression "Seongjima"? So, there is a Korean expression "Seongjima", and do you have a brother called Jima? Well, that was a joke. I believe all of us may experienced such unfair situation. So, can you make a brief comment on this?
Yes. The moderator just mentioned that we are close, and we know each other already. So, arms bend inward. So, we treat each other in a favorable manner. Well, this is kind of a nature of human being. But we are living in a big society, and in office or in a public space, if we explicitly express such special relation, the third party will feel that they are neglected and that will lead to the disadvantage in promotion or hiring process. Then it will create unfair situation. So, we need to have a distinction of close relation and public duty. In our society, we are influenced by nepotism. And maybe this is a characteristic of Korea. And we regarded that this is a beautiful custom of Korean society. However, if someone is getting disadvantage due to this unfair situation, I believe we need to address this problem in the future. Regarding this, taking this as an opportunity, we need to determine and consider how we can change the situation. Talking about the unfairness, we are wondering what is the main reason for this unfair situation? And there was an interesting experiment. The ACRC had an experiment by using lie, special treatment and favor, and we wanted to know what is the main reason. And I believe this shows some clues about the unfair situation. They're a kinder partner, so they're very candid. I have a twin. There are four. And they're very honest. They usually say I love my father, but if I say something, they say that I hate you. So, they're very candid. So, in this experiment, how did children respond? So, the first experiment, in this experiment, children are asked to stay quiet without any special relation. So, they had a class, and the teacher left the room, and the teacher fall down, the camera, and camera is broken down. And the teacher said that you need to stay silent. So, in this first experiment, between the teacher and children, there is no bondage. Then, would children stay silent? Let's see what is the outcome. The teacher did not have the special relation and asked that children need to stay silent. And with just one second, four children told the truth. So, when there is no special relations and asked for favor, four children spoke out and said truth. It is very interesting. Four children said that the teacher broke down the camera. Let's move on to the second experiment. This time, the teacher built special relation with children, and they are in the same age. The teacher had a class and built special relations and asked the same favor to these children. In this second experiment, we have a special relation between teacher and children. In the first experiment, children answered within just one second. But this time, would children say the truth? Unlike the first experiment, when the camera woman entered the room, children became silent. And the woman asked about the camera to the children, asking whether someone broke down the camera, and would children say something? It just fall down. And the teacher just moved the camera back to the original position. Then, it is not truth. One child tried to say the truth, but the others stopped him. So, nine children did not say the truth. Interesting. Only one child was the public interest reporter, in a sense. This is very simple experiment, and special bondage is this much important. So, our closeness is a psychological mechanism that made us not to say the truth. So, let me summarize the video. You just mentioned the public interest report. So, the teacher asked children not to say the truth. So, this is unfair favor. First, they created their special relation. Sometimes, the teacher may give the gift. With this kind of special relation, usually, we accept the special request in a more easier manner. And we confirm this with this video experiment. Our social relation, educational background, or dining together, or giving and receiving the gift can build the relation. And due to this, we turn a blind eye to our unfair situation, and that can lead to the corrupted situation in our society. So, this video is very symbolic. Of course, the children are very candid. I'm not saying that they are corrupted, but based on this video, we can realize that how corruption can start. They're very pure and adorable. They just wanted to protect the teacher. And one child told the truth. If the teacher gave the candy, then I believe the rest one child will stay silent. So, in our society, this kind of special relation or closeness can be built. And with this, people can take advantage of this relation to get their own benefit. So, in a business and in a hiring process, instead of pursuing skills and competencies, we'll only focus on personal relations and closeness to powerful people to solve our difficulties. If this kind of perspective is pervasive in our society, then we will indulge ourselves into unnecessary unfair situation. So regarding this, I believe we need to change our perspective. And even though we are close and we know each other, let's assume that we do not know each other and be public. Because it can influence to any third parties. And it can also damage and influence to the competitiveness of Korea.
This is why close relationship with someone may corrupt fair practices. We need to be aware of this fact. You talked about personal ties. If people who do not have such personal ties are supposed to fall behind others, it would be a terrible situation. So I want to ask you a question. Raise your hand if you think you have good personal ties and you feel assured. No, none of you have good personal ties with someone who can give you a benefit? All of you are fair people? Or would you raise your hand if if you think that personal ties or connections may be necessary for you to enter universities or to get a job? If you think you need some personal ties to get a job or to enter good university? Yes, five out of nine young people here raised their hands. It means that still in our society, many people think that it is important to establish good personal connections. So ACRC conducted another experiment with children. When children had special bonding with their teacher, they told a lie. So that was the experiment we have just watched. This time, I will show you another experiment. And this time, the teacher stamped a seal that says "I shall not tell a lie". And the teacher had the students memorize that sentence. After children all memorized the sentence, then we did the same experiment. And it turned out that these children didn't tell a lie. What does this mean? In our society, we have no choice but to have certain personal relationship based on our academic background or based on the region we are from. However, if we abide by the set rules and laws in our society to prevent corrupted practices, then we can resolve the problems caused by improper solicitation or unfair practices. As you know, the so-called Kim Myung-nan Act, which is the improper solicitation and graft act, was enacted. Under this law, any person is prohibited from making improper solicitation to public officials. It also prohibits public officials from accepting any bribes. So by respecting and complying with such laws and regulations, we will be able to establish fair practices and integrity in our society. So in the third experiment, you stamped a seal for the children which says "I shall not tell a lie". So the sentence "I shall not tell a lie" is like the improper solicitation and graft act. In the initial phase of implementing this law, we had quite a lot of backlash and opposition from many people in our society. People said that it is our beautiful culture and tradition to have delicious meals with people that we feel close to, even though that may be related to that person's public duty. But it has been four years since we enacted and implemented this act. And I feel that the perception of the public has changed a lot. In the past, people thought that making some solicitation for their private interest for public officials is the natural thing to do. But now, Korean people do not think like that. So in order to see the perception of our society members on the practice of solicitation and unfair practices, we conducted a survey. This year, we conducted a survey in August. And in the survey, eighty-seven point eight percent of the Korean people answered that they support the implementation of the improper solicitation and graft act. That's like nine people out of ten Koreans are for the implementation of the improper solicitation and graft act. And regarding improper solicitation, acceptance of bribes or entertainment and treats for public officials have almost disappeared in Korea since we started to execute this improper solicitation and graft act. It has significantly reduced such corrupted practices. I also feel the same way. In the past, we just talked like we don't need to exchange gifts or presents with each other that may make our relationship uncomfortable. So in the past, some public officials were willing to accept some presents. But nowadays, public officials, they rightly say that they are not supposed to take any bribes or any gifts. So making requests, giving gifts have been conducted as part of our daily lives in the past. But nowadays, people recognize that such behaviors could become unfair practices. And for example, on Teacher's Day, students tended to prepare gifts for their teacher and flowers for their teacher. And in some sense, that's just from the bottom of their heart. But with the enactment and establishment of the improper solicitation and graft act, some students may feel that the act is actually prohibiting me from expressing my own appreciation and gratitude to my loving teacher. However, with the establishment and implementation of this act, students no longer need to worry about what kind of presents or gifts they have to prepare for teachers on the Teacher's Day. And also from teacher's perspective, they can be more comfortable with meeting with students on Teacher's Day because there will be no exchange of gifts between the teachers and students. So through the establishment and implementation of the improper solicitation and graft act, a majority of the Korean people and people from public and private institutions feel that the behaviors that they thought were natural are now viewed from a different perspective, from a more strict perspective to see if they are not really corrupted practice or not. As you mentioned, the improper solicitation and graft act has brought about great change into our society. Regarding this law, do you have any expectation? Or do you want to make any comments? Please raise your hand. Yes, please go ahead. Would you introduce yourself? My name is Shin Eun-ji. I think that with the establishment of the improper solicitation and graft act, our public and private relationship became more comfortable. But young people are still likely to experience unfair situations. And I hope the improper solicitation and graft act will be able to prevent such situations. For example, we experience unfairness in many aspects, such as academic grade, thesis examination, and in selection of scholarship students. So she mentioned the unfairness cases that may be experienced by young people in our society. How could we prevent such issues? Are you a college student? I am a graduate student. So you may need to have good relationship with your professor to get a good outcome on your thesis? The improper solicitation and graft act does not put restriction on every kind of exchange of gifts in our society, but it actually defined fourteen types of improper solicitation behaviors. If any behavior falls under the fourteen, under one of the fourteen categories of improper solicitation, then such behavior could be subject to punishment, for example. But in terms of the selection of scholarship students and thesis examination mentioned by the student, that issue is not yet included in the fourteen items defined as improper solicitation. But many people are paying attention to unfair practices in the student scholarship selection, internship determination, and thesis examination. And ACRC is aware of this issue. Although the scholarship selection or thesis examination are not yet included in the fourteen categories of improper solicitation, we are now taking measures to include them as one of the unfair practices so that we can apply this law and regulations. Actually, when we give presents or gifts to someone, the type of present and the amount of the money could be regarded as important. But what's more important is the purpose of giving such gifts to someone you're close to. So hello, my name is Kim Hyeon-seok. I would like to make some comments. Recently, there was a press report about high-ranking public officials who created conflict of interest in their family businesses that were related to their public duty. And ACRC has tried to establish the Act on Prevention of Conflict of Interest. What do you think about such conflict of interest for high-ranking public officials? And what kind of plan do you have to prevent the conflict of interest? Actually, I hear the word "conflict of interest" very often from the news. Could you explain what conflict of interest actually means? Yes? In our society, one of the most important law to prevent unfair practices and improper solicitation is the improper solicitation and graft act. It prohibits public officials from receiving improper solicitation or request. And if a public official received improper request or solicitation from someone in private relationship with that person, or if a public official is conducting a public duty and at the same time involved in their own private interest, or involved in the matters related to a person close to themselves. So if any public official conducts the public duty at the same time with their private interest, for example, there are cases where the public duty of an official conflicts with that person's private interest. For example, a public official is in charge of development of a certain region. And a person who has private relationship with that official may make an improper request. If you select our company, then I can give you some I can give you some benefit. So our rule is to prevent the conflict between public duty and private interest by law. So if stock price of a company is likely to increase and if if the public official owns some shares of that company, then they should avoid their public duty related to that company. So if a public official understands that their public duty is related to their private interest or the private interest of a person close to them, they should avoid conducting such public duties. So we are preventing them from having the conflict of interest through the bill on the prevention of conflict of interest.
You mentioned these cases related to public duty and conflict of interest. And there are other cases. For example, in a streaming platform, there are streamers. And they explain that Company A is very promising and encourage people to buy the share of Company A. And even if the streamer is not a public official, this is almost a fraud. So you gave good example to explain this conflict of interest. In order to establish justice and fairness, the ACRC is now making efforts. And with this effort, I believe our future will be very transparent. And I believe you will make continuous effort in the future. Yes, the ACRC is making efforts to create fair society. And I explained two laws. The improper solicitation and graft act is already ineffective. But when it comes to the Act on Prevention of Conflict of Interest, it is still pending in the parliament. But soon, it will be enacted because I believe there are high interest among politicians and public. So with these two laws, the ACRC will make more efforts to make our society transparent and fair. In a way, we are experiencing many difficulties, especially in the COVID-19. And we are going through economic difficulties. So some say that economy is the priority. Why are you trying to regulate activities? However, corruption and economic growth, they are closely related. As I mentioned before, if there is a pervasive practice of unfairness, you will focus on creating close ties and treat others for special favor and eventually get a job and promote it. And it is the same for the businesses. They will focus on treating and giving entertainment to public officials related to their business so that they can influence to the policies. So in this sense, companies will not focus on their core business and people will not focus on extending their abilities. So it is all related to cost. However, if we can prevent such situation, all of us will focus on what is really important. And individuals and businesses will make efforts to enhance their competencies, which will grow companies and individuals. So with these, I believe we can grow our economy. So without corruption, if we have fair and transparent society, it will facilitate the growth of society and economy. So in this COVID-19 situation, integrity, anti-corruption, and fairness will be even more important than before. Yes, Chairperson just summarized all the important factors. So the first topic was our effort for justice and fairness. Do you know what is the topic of the nineteenth IACC? First, IACC means International Anti-Corruption Conference. So am I pronounced right? And the theme of this IACC is designing 2030: Truth, Trust, and Transparency. I believe this is very meaningful theme. So Chairperson, can you explain what is the significance of the theme? So Chairperson, can you explain what is the significance of the theme? The 19th IACC is being held with the theme "Designing 2030: Truth, Trust, and Transparency." Based on truth, trust, and transparency, we are going to design anti-corruption and sustainable future for the next 10 years. So in a sense, next 10 year will be created in a fair and transparent manner for our future generation. And we are in a COVID-19 pandemic, which is a global disaster. And socially underprivileged people hit hardest. Our welfare and our social support should be distributed in an equal and fair manner. In order to do that, we need to ensure fairness and transparency. Amid the COVID-19, Korea and countries around the world will take this as an opportunity to consider fair and transparent society. And especially for young people, we would like to create a new paradigm for the young generation. Yes, so the second topic we would like to discuss is truth, trust, and the value of transparency and our future. You just mentioned COVID-19. After COVID-19, the world is looking at us in a different manner. Due to the COVID-19, I believe all of you already know this. We realized that Korea is an advanced country and an excellent country, and COVID-19 was an opportunity to realize that. And in a sense, I believe we underestimated the value of Korea until now. The Korean disease prevention and control measures and Korean governments are highly praised. On top of that, with this International Anti-Corruption Conference, I believe many countries around the world renewed their perspective about Korean disease prevention and control measures. And I believe the world will also cannot understand what is the Korean integrity, K-integrity. And I hope through this conference, we can promote our efforts for integrity. Before COVID-19, we didn't realize that we have good disease prevention measures. Likewise, when it comes to fairness and integrity, you may not understand how good we are. But we have very excellent system and institutes. And with this good system, as Korean disease prevention and control measures were able to exert its competencies thanks to the support of Korean people, I believe our integrity will be also established thanks to the support of Korean people. So the cooperation of our people and Korean integrity will be promoted at this International Anti-Corruption Conference. Yes, we are talking about the Korean disease control and prevention measures. And in this process, instead of hiding the situation, we told the truth in a transparent manner. And based on this transparency, we came together to overcome these difficulties. From now on, I would like to have more discussion with young panelists. Regarding this panel discussion, I believe young people are the future generations. So if you have any question, please go ahead to this Chairperson. So please raise your hand if you have a question. Yes, the lady in the front row, please introduce yourself.
My name is Son Se Min. Recently, there was a TV show called Stranger, and a prosecutor and detective revealed the corruption in the organization, which is very just behavior. But in the process, due to this public interest report, they were shunned by their colleagues. So it's kind of bullying. So when we tell the truth, the public interest reporters will be shunned. So do you have any measures to address this problem? If we are convinced that there is a measure to prevent such bullying, then we will be able to tell the truth. So do you have any measure? Corruption continues in a backside of our society without knowing. So despite the existence of corruption and unfair situation, they will not be exposed? So it is difficult to punish them or investigate the corruption. So the best way to address the corruption is the courageous social report from the insider of the organization. And that courage is called as Public Interest Report. However, they may get disadvantaged, or they will be expelled from the organization, and they will be shunned from their colleagues. It is actually happening. So for the Public Interest Report, to ensure that kind of courage, we need to have a system. That's why ACRC has Protection of Public Interest Reporters Act. When you report corruption, your identity or personal information will be protected. And if there is any advantage due to the Public Interest Report, we will prevent that. We can restrict such organizations so that they will not give any disadvantage to the public interest reporters. And through this report, if you contribute to national financial situation, then there is a compensation system. Despite all these, you'll be afraid of being exposed that you reported the corruption. For such case, we have lawyer groups. They will be delegated. And in anonymity, through the lawyers, you can also report such corruption. And the cost of the lawyers will be borne by the ACRC. So if you know any corruption or any unfair irregularities, and if you are still afraid of being exposed, we at ACRC have our lawyer system and protective system. So please take advantage of such system. Then we can make our society even more transparent. Thank you very much for your answer. I believe this system will be more utilized in the future. Do you have any corruption to report? If you have, your secrecy is in confidence. So I don't have any corruption to report. Was that a stranger, the TV show? I think you need to have a binge-watching. So we have many protection measures and compensation system, and also anonymous reporting system as well. So with these systems, I believe we can have more report.
Yes, gentlemen there. Hello, my name is Kang Young Jun. Recently, the National Assembly discussed providing the third disaster allowance to the people. With the pandemic, the government has increased its financial support and expenditures for the people. And there might be financial leakage or improper receipt of the government subsidies. What is the role of ACRC to use such limited resources efficiently? So... So you care for the amount of tax you paid because the public allowance from the government is based on the taxpayers' money. So you want those taxpayers' money to be used efficiently. And we need to prevent any person from improperly receiving such benefit. Usually, many people say that the government's money is easy money. They really don't like to spend their own money. However, they think it is very easy to use the government's money. So you gave a very good question. This year, in the midst of COVID-19, the government is conducting expansionary fiscal policies. And this year, a large amount of government budget will be used for supporting many people in our society. And we have the National Disaster Alloance for the People, which is directly provided to the Korean people or through welfare institutions and other public institutions. We need to ensure such government public allowance is used in a transparent and proper way. But if any person thinks that such government allowance is easy money, and if they claim receive or provide improperly such government subsidy and allowance, then that will be a very serious problem that actually should not happen. But we see such problems happening in the midst of COVID-19. And these are definitely the corruptive practices. The government subsidy and public allowance are based on the taxpayers' money. So we should prevent any improper claim or provision or receipt of such government subsidy. To resolve these issues, we, this year, ACRC has enacted a new law to retrieve any improperly received government allowance that is called Public Fund Recovery Act. If any person improperly claimed and received the government allowance, then they have to pay back the amount five times larger than the actual amount they received. And also, we disclose the list of people who improperly received the government allowance. And if any person knows or sees another person improperly claiming and receiving the public allowance, then that person can make a report to ACRC. So after such a report, if ACRC successfully retrieves the improperly received money and put it into the national government reserves, then the reporter can receive up to 3 billion Korean won as a reward. So if any one of you know or see someone improperly claiming or receiving the public allowance, then please report it to ACRC. That will contribute to retrieving the improperly paid public allowance to the government. And you will also receive a reward for that behavior. So it's not just because of the reward of up to 3 billion Korean won. So twist of tongue, because that's such a large reward. So when we accidentally find a wallet on the street, we're supposed to carry it to the police station, for example, to give it to the original owner. So the amount of reward is not really something that matters. But what matters is that we need to ensure the taxpayers' money is properly spent. And the public officials need to operate and use such taxpayers' money in a more transparent and efficient way. That's the purpose. Yes, that's not just because of the amount of reward. Yes, the reward for making a report on any implicit receipt of such public allowance is 3 billion Korean won. And I'd like to ask the last question. There is someone who's wearing the school uniform. Would you introduce yourself?
Hello, my name is So Yoo Min. Are you a high school student? Yes. I am first grader at high school.
Actually, you look like just peers of the other panelists. Do you understand what we are talking about? Yes, I think so. Maybe something... Some of the talks we are having today may sound difficult to you. But I think it is important to provide the education on anti-corruption to students. From your perspective, what is your question? In your inauguration ceremony, you mentioned that in order to achieve the national goal of making it to the top 20 countries in terms of Corruption Perceptions Index, CPI, ACRC must make painstaking efforts for anti-corruption. Do you think Korea can make it to the top 20 place in terms of CPI? And what do we have to do to achieve that? So that was a question, difficult question to be asked by a high school student. Thank you very much for the very good question. You also watched the inauguration ceremony. Thank you very much. Before answering the question, actually, our emcee mentioned that for our future generation, for the youth, we need to provide education on anti-corruption. Education on integrity and fairness for the existing generation are of course important, but integration... But the education on integrity, fairness, and anti-corruption is much more important to be provided to our young people because they are the ones who are going to live out of the future. So it seems that you have great interest in this area. So I'm very pleased and thankful to receive the question. You mentioned our national goal to achieve the certain CPI ranking. CPI is announced by TI, Transparency International, which is also the co-organizer of this conference. So Transparency International announces transparency level or integrity level of all countries across the world. That's CPI. In 2019, among about 180 countries. So CPI can be understood as the indicator of integrity. Korea was ranked 39th. Several years ago, maybe three years ago, Korea was ranked about 59th.
But Korea's integrity level increased significantly. Korea is actually the 10th largest economy in the world and is regarded as quite advanced country. But its integrity level is ranked 39th among 180 countries across the world. And it seems that its ranking is relatively low compared to the size of the economy. So I feel that we have a long way to go. So considering the level of economic power of Korea, our integrity level, in other words, the CPI ranking, should be around the top 20. And we need to enhance the awareness of the public on integrity. And the Korean people need to increase their sensitivity to these issues. Most important thing is that we need to create policies, laws, and regulations on anti-corruption, and then put those laws and regulations into practice. This is why we have established the Public Fund Recovery Act. Also, we are pushing forward the establishment of the law on prevention of conflict of interest for public officials. And through improper solicitation and graft act, we are preventing corruptive practices in our society. Through these efforts, I think we can improve our CPI ranking. But still, we are not yet meeting the expectations of the Korean people in terms of the anti-corruption activities. And our CPI ranking is still low. And as an organization responsible for this effort, ACRC and many other public officials will do their best, make the utmost efforts, actually painstaking efforts to make further improvement. So I'd like to ask you, the young panelists here and all the viewers of this conference, to pay more interest and attention to this issue. For us to achieve higher CPI score, we need all of your engagement and participation in the anti-corruption efforts. For computers, CPU plays an important role. For a country or government, CPI plays an important role. Just to help you easily understand this. So why is the target to make it to the top 20? Why not top 10? Yes, maybe from today, we can think about adjusting our target upward to achieve the top 10 ranking in terms of CPI. Then, not only ACRC, but also the entire country should work together to make it to the top 10 in terms of CPI. So please join us in our efforts to achieve that. So I believe that we can achieve that target in the near future. So we should make efforts altogether. The 19th IACC talk concert is being held. So we had a very good time through this talk concert. It wasn't a long time, but how did you feel? We've been talking about this issue for about one hour. I think it was very meaningful to be here and talk with our young people. And I realized that our young people have great interest in fairness and anti-corruption in our society. So I feel really reassured. And at the same time, I feel a great responsibility. The high school student has just mentioned the CPI level of the Korean government. So I mentioned during my talk that people think that we don't have the luxury to think about anti-corruption because the economy is sluggish. But I said that the economic growth goes hand in hand with the anti-corruption.
So however, when we increase the CPI point by 10, then the GDP of a country will increase by 65 trillion Korean won. So it is very expensive 10 point. If we can increase our CPI to the top 20s, then it will ensure us to grow our economy. So I believe this CPI is very important. And it can go in parallel with the economic growth. It was such a meaningful time with our young people. And in this International Anti-Corruption Conference, do you know who was the keynote speaker? He was the Professor Michael Sandel from Harvard University. And his book title is Justice. So in this time, justice, anti-corruption, fairness, we need to discuss and consider about these topics and keywords with young people. That is the place where we have International Anti-Corruption Conference. With young people regarding truth and integrity, we had a discussion. It is such a meaningful time. Yes, Professor Michael Sandel made a presentation, and I believe all of you were here during that speech. And I am convinced that that lecture was also very significant for you. As mentioned by Chairperson, we had an International Anti-Corruption Conference challenge. We call this as We Korea Great Promise Challenge. So we have a gesture that signifies W. Use your finger to, this is for promotion of IACC. And we would like to pose this gesture together. So this is We Great Promise Challenge. Promise? So we want to promise integrity. We want to promise anti-corruption. And it also means X, no to corruption. So there are multiple meanings. And as you can see on the screen, for this International Anti-Corruption Conference, the honorary ambassador is Monster X, a boi group. And Monster X is also X. So they are posing this gesture. We promise integrity. We started this challenge, and many Korean people are participating in this challenge together. So Monster X is an honorary ambassador for this event. And if we had BTX instead of BTS, they will be the honorary ambassador. I want to, I do not want to anger the army. But anyways, we want to promise integrity, and we want to say no to anti-corruption. So thank you very much for the nine panelists. And thank you very much, Chairperson. With this We Great Promise Challenge, we would like to conclude this talk show. Please chant with me. We say no to corruption and promise integrity. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for being with us. I say no to corruption and I promise integrity.